I'd like to call the June 19, 2012, City of Troy's Board of Appeals meeting to order. Before we get started, I'd like to read a simple prepared statement that we read at the beginning of every meeting. It just gives you a general idea of the operations of the board. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by city council to pass judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or a practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. In regards to the procedures to discuss these matters, the board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. If any of you want an agenda, there are extra copies out just outside the doorway. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium, sign in on the sheet provided. Speakers should identify themselves with name and address and indicate their relationship to the property in question, such as next door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera, and then state whether they are in favor or against the variance request and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of the public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table, meaning we're going to delay, the action of the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court. And that is a normal procedure that we use at the beginning of, we read through every meeting and we follow every meeting. Mr. Evans, if you could, could you read the roll call?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bartnik?
Here.
Mr. Keltzounas?
Yeah.
Mr. Courtney?
Here.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
I'd like to note that we do have one absentee tonight. Mr. Kortounas is filling in for Mr. Glenn Clark, who is unfortunately not able to be present. The board is set up with seven voting members and two alternates. The alternates are qualified board members trained and such, and they take the place of someone who can't make a meeting. We do have two alternates, and the second alternate is Mr. Bloomfield, who is sitting in the audience, actually. Thank you for coming. Before we get started, I'd just like to make a note, even though Mr. Clark is not here, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Clark and Mr. Bartnik for reappointment to the board. I believe you're appointed through 2015, but I think I can speak behalf of the board because I know you've both been tenured long term and I think at least a vice chairman, if not chairman. I want to just say, we really appreciate your years of service and thank you for asking for reappointment. Item number three on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the May 2012 meeting. Having reviewed the minutes, is there anybody who would have questions or comments for revisions to the minutes or make a motion for approval? Mr. Bartnik?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Paragraph seven, "Resolved to elect Michael Bartnik as chair and to bifurcate the vote." I think that's, I wasn't hot here, but I think that should probably be rephrased because it probably was more accurately a motion to bifurcate the vote to allow the nomination of another person as the chair. Otherwise, I mean, there's two purposes in that motion, and both of them would have been passed five to two, so I think there might have been a different purpose to that particular resolution.
Okay.
So it should be corrected.
Okay. Do you have a proposed language statement that you specifically want?
I would suggest, Mr. I would suggest somebody who was here to make a
My suggestion would be maybe "resolved to nominate Michael Bartnik for chair and bifurcate the vote" would be probably more what was in the intent of Mr. Stratt's motion. Of course, he can speak to that himself.
Mr. Stratt, since this involves you, do you have a comment? Because I'm not sure if the minutes at this point truly reflect what you may have asked for. My recollection isn't that good.
You looking for me?
Yeah, I was asking you, because you were, does Mr. Lambert characterize what your intent was?
Correct, yes.
All right. Mr. Lambert, would you, can you offer that in form of a motion?
Sure. Well, I would, if it's appropriate to move the minutes with the, they've been moved, but my suggestion is that they be moved with the change in wording to say "resolved to nominate Michael Bartnik for chairman and to bifurcate the vote."
Support.
Mr. Evans, can you do a quick roll call?
Mr. Keltzounas?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
One item of orders, I may have, I know I stepped forward. Mr. Bartnik, you don't mind that I didn't allow any discussion on that?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, fine, thank you. Are there any other comments about the minutes or revisions? Seeing none, is there anyone interested in putting forth a motion to approve the revised minutes?
I thought we just did that.
No, I think we just adj, we just adjusted the one segment.
Support.
Okay, thank you. Actually, are you making, I don't have a motion yet. You're making a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Yes, I'm a second.
Mr. Fisher, can we have a quick vote?
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Keltzounas?
Yes.
And just so I got that right, Mr. Courtney, motion, and the second was Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Now that we got rid of all our administrative activities, we're going to actually get to why we're here today. Item four, hearing of cases, we have a variance request that's presented by the North Woodward Community Foundation at 3668 Liversburg, Troy Family Days Festival. Mr. Evans, could you give us a rundown of the item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located on the east side of Liversburg, south of East Waddles Road in the red square on the overhead. There's a more close-up view of it. The property is commonly known as Zion Christian Church. The property and most of the surrounding property in yellow on the overhead is zoned "single-family residential." The property is a North Walsh College, is zoned "community facilities." The request is in order to conduct an outdoor special event known as the Troy Family Days Festival. They need several variances here. The first one is a variance from the requirement that the hours of operation end no later than 8:00 PM on Thursday and Sunday, and no later than 10:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. Those are the limits prescribed in the ordinance. The second variance is a variance that limits the maximum duration for any one event to four consecutive days. Now, the applicant proposes to end all the daily events one hour beyond the required times, and the proposed event is to last for a total of eight days, four days festival plus four days devoted to setup and teardown. Now, the event is scheduled for September 10th through 17th of this year, and the applicant is requesting approval for the same event for a three-year period.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Would the applicant or the applicant's representatives like to come forward and provide any additional commentary or description?
Hi, Tom Koschewski for the Troy Family Days Festival. With me tonight is the representative of the property, Dick Ramsdale, from Zion Christian Church. And I'm going to defer to Cheryl Whitten, who is our resident architect, and she does all the site plan and takes care of all of those matters, so I'm going to defer to her to give her presentation.
Ma'am, before you get started or before you're done, if you could remember to sign in and such, that would be great.
No problem. Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank you again for last year's variances, which are the same ones that we're requesting this evening. Because of that, we were able to put on a safe, family-oriented festival that, because of the success of the festival, we were able to start a rainy day fund for future festivals, and we were able to give back grants to the community. So through the festival, we're supporting the community. There is no way possible that we can put on a community festival without having eight days. The three days is mandatory for setup to make sure that all the tents, all the amusement rides and everything are installed in a safe manner to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. We also need one day after the festival to tear down. And then we need four days of the festival to ensure that we are fiscally sound and at least break even for this festival so that we can continue it for many years to come. We asked for the request for the additional time because the young people of the community, many of them either work or participate in sports, and we like them to be able to attend the festival also. And without the extra hour, if in case we run into inclement weather, we need to make sure that we are raising enough funds to be able to ensure the festival is financially successful. So without these variances, there is, it would be a great hardship for us to be able to put on this community event for the entire community. This year, we're also asking for these variances to be granted for a three-year process. We feel that since the majority of us that work on the festival have many years' experience in running this festival, and then through last year showing that we can put on a safe event for all of the community, we would like to ask for these variances to be granted for three years. But if by chance that there is a problem with anything that happens, or if we change the festival in some manner, or if there's a complaint from a neighbor, we're more than willing to come back and address those issues. But if there are no changes or any complaints, we would like to have these variances for the next three years. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to open this up to the board. Is there any board member who has a question for the applicant? No? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. What I'd like to ask you to do is to please take your seat, and we will bring this back to the board for discussion, for our internal discussion. If a question comes up, we may recall you, but at this time, I think, I think we have all the information that we need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, bringing this back to the board, Mr. Evans?
And, Mr. Chair, I would like to bring to the attention of the board and for the public that the staff did receive one public comment from the Board of Appeals that has been included in your packet, and they live on Wendleton, and they approve of the variance from the hours of operation, but just not for three years. The applicant indicates they would like to see a variance for only two years. Or, excuse me, the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Prior to actually bringing this forward, can I apologize for my own operation of the meeting, but it's proper to actually have public comment before we enter this?
Yes.
My apologies, everyone. This is my first meeting, can you tell? I would like to open this open for a public comment if there's anybody who is at the meeting who would like to speak on this matter before we have our own internal, our upfront discussion here. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'd like the record to reflect, there's no one here asking for additional time, so I'm going to close public comment. I'm going to bring it back to the board, and I would like to open it up to the board members for discussion of this matter. I would make one comment upfront. It seems to me that the big issue that appears to me that's open for some definite discussion is the extension of the time period of the, of the variance. So, Mr. Courtney?
Yes, I have no problem with the three years. In fact, was going to move that, but since at least one citizen has said two, I have no problem with two either, so I would like to make a motion unless, unless you think others may want to
Well, I think there might be some other comments, so I want to make sure before we go forward entertain your motion, I just want to make sure there's not enough. Mr. Stratt, do you have a comment to make?
Yeah, I'd like to ask staff, is there a possibility of, or can we have a conditional approval?
Yes, as long as the
Can it be a conditional approval based on if somebody does complain, or if they do have a problem, we can ask for them to come back?
Sure.
Would it be an unconditional kind of a thing, or?
Well, as long as it's reasonably
Do we have to identify the specifics on it?
You could. You know, one thing that comes to mind when the applicant mentioned complaints is, sometimes people will call various city departments, maybe the police department, the fire department, with a complaint, but if the matter is resolved to their satisfaction, then there really would be no need for someone to come back before the Board of Appeals because it didn't change anything. But certainly, any conditions that the board chooses to put on it, as long as they're reasonably related to the variance, are perfectly acceptable.
Okay. If we were to go into that direction administratively, let me ask a follow-up. How would we, what would be the control mechanism in the future? Would they be filing for a use permit or something on which they'd have to put forth their, their plan, would that be to the planning commission? I mean, how would we as a city know that what they're doing, let's say, in year two of the granted variance, if it was granted, that nothing has changed?
On a yearly basis, they still have to submit for a temporary outdoor special event permit.
Okay. Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments? Mr. Bartnik?
I would move for approval of the request for three years, subject only to an unresolved complaint that's not resolved administratively. Support.
I believe we have a motion for Mr. Bartnik to grant a three-year variance, and we have actually two board members supporting. Would you just note it as Mr. Courtney is supporting it? You don't mind that Mr. Lambert, do you?
That's fine.
Okay. We have a motion before the board to grant the variance with an allowance for it to be in place for three years. Is there any discussion on that particular amendment, or motion, excuse me? Mr. Lambert?
I was just going to indicate, I know last year when this was discussed, at first the board was leaning toward a three-year, but because it was kind of new for the group to be putting on, even though they're veterans at putting on the event, and it's at a new location, I know there was some concern about the board about bringing it back one year later, but I believe based upon their outstanding record at running the event and without, you know, any complaints that we are aware of, that I think three years is an appropriate period of time for, for a group that's, you know, they're not like coming from outside the town, they're part of our community, they're doing it to support the city of Troy and the people that live here, so I think three years is a very appropriate time period.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there any additional comments from a board member? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, can you do a roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Keltzounas?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Congratulations. You have your variance, and you have an extended period. Now, as you go forward, we all look forward to attending, and thank you for coming tonight. I'm moving on to, I'm sorry, Ms. Courtney?
Before we move on, I would like to request that the department notify the people on Wendleton of the passing of this for three years and indicate that if they have a problem, they should talk to the department.
That can be done.
That way, if it, if it really is a problem, it can come back to us.
Thank you, Ms. Courtney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, if you could follow up with that in the next, whatever's convenient for next week or business week or so, that would be wonderful, Mr. Evans.
Certainly, we'll let them know so they know what to expect.
Moving on to our hearing of cases, item 4B refers to a variance request for 5332 Patterson. Mr. Evans, can you give us a breakdown of the request?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located in a residential neighborhood north of Long Lake Road and west of Dequinda Road. In the overheads, it's outlined in the red. The property, single-family residential home, is zoned "single-family residential," and all surrounding properties are also zoned "single-family residential." And immediately east and adjacent is the Neighborhood Association Park, subject to 5532 Patterson. The property involves a proposed addition to the existing house, and they're going to add on towards the back of the house. This is our renderings of the completed product, of the addition. The overhead shows that they're proposing to be 36 feet 4 inches from the rear property line, and the zoning ordinance requires a 40-foot setback from the rear property line. So in order to be successful tonight, they're going to need to get a variance from this board. Now, I would note that this subdivision that was approved by the city in the early 70s took advantage of an option in the zoning ordinance that no longer exists. That particular option allowed the developer to include public open spaces, and in return, the city would allow smaller lots and reduced rear yard setbacks. At that time the house was built, that house and all the other houses in the neighborhood were required to have a 35-foot rear yard setback. The new zoning ordinance, which was enacted in April of 2011, eliminated that development option and reset, so to say, the rear yard setback to 40 feet. So if he's successful tonight with his variance, he'll have this house.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Before I bring the applicant up, I do have one question, and it just comes from part of their application. Page 27 of the, of the package, it does indicate, I believe it's in the third paragraph, it said, "Both of our neighbors have similar additions in the back of their homes." In the, in the, I don't know if you had a chance to research it, but was there any, and I think from your explanation of the change in the zoning ordinance, I already answered the question, but was there a variance granted to either neighbor home in the past or where?
No.
Okay. They were just following the previous ordinance?
Presumably, yes.
Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Ploss, or your designated representative, would you like to please come forward and give us a, any additional comments you'd like to make for your application?
Mr. Chairman, I actually found the original building restrictions the other day from the, I guess it would be our board association, and I did not get a chance to give them to Paul Evans. I was wondering if I could give them to you, or if it would
That would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll pass this along through the board members so they can see it also.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
Okay, the building restrictions, when the house was built, it was a 25-foot setback, and now they had changed it obviously to the 40. So we're just looking to get the variance of the 3-foot, I think it's 6 inches, so we can build the addition.
Sorry for delay, but I want them also
Oh, no.
Mr. Evans, for our, for our documentation purposes, can you just make, make a note to make sure that his added documentation gets in the record, gets copied?
By all means.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stratt?
Could you state what your hardship really is?
The variance review standards for the zoning ordinance, section 15.04, I had
That's not what I'm asking.
Oh, okay.
You know, don't, the zoning ordinance is in existence right now.
Right.
That's what we, what is your hardship as relates to the existing zoning?
As far as each, that would be the hardship, would be each paragraph of the zoning section that you guys have in place.
Why couldn't you make it smaller, the addition, and conform?
With the setbacks, it just, it won't allow proper rooming in the living room, because it's what it's going to be, is a living room from the backside of the wall, to be able to have a family room with, even have couches in there. I don't even think I'd be able to get 30, probably 30 to 36 inches behind that, if people do it.
That is your
The hardship.
Hardship, is that correct?
Well, no, I mean, the hardship is, without building the addition the size it is, it just doesn't make it beneficiary to build the addition. I'm not building the addition anything bigger than the two houses to either side of me.
That, that, it's not practical for you to put the addition on, if I'm hearing you correctly, unless you get this variance, is that correct?
If I don't get the variance, I will not build the addition.
That's what I wanted to find out.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
It was kind of difficult getting it out of you, but we don't care about the past.
Right.
Just want to know what is your hardship, that's all. That's what we're interested in here.
And for point of reference, for the term hardship, it has, pertains to what we have to look at, has a specific meeting, meaning, so to speak, and it's, it's a threshold of information that you as an applicant have to meet. And then from that, then we can discuss whether or not we can give you some options. Are there any additional questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'm going to ask you to sit down. If there's something that comes up, we may recall you, but appreciate you coming and providing some additional information, and I'm going to open up the meeting for public comment on this issue, if there's anyone who would like to speak.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mark.
Sir, feel free to come up. And if you could, sir, once you reach the podium, if you could sign in and also state your name, and you're free to speak. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Corcoran, and I'm a neighbor for Aaron here. I'd just like to point out that Aaron, kind of relatively new to the neighborhood, but everything he has done to the house since he has moved in has been absolutely perfect and beautiful. It isn't, I looked at what he wants to do, adding on the distance, and I don't think that would be a problem. It's not a problem as far as I'm concerned, and I live two houses away. He's done, he's done very, very good, making the house look, look great, look beautiful. I'm sure it has increased the property value of not only his house, but all of, all of his neighbors in the area. So I'm in, I'm in total agreement for, for him adding on with this variance. That's
Thank you, sir. Is there any questions for the speaker from the board? Seeing none, I appreciate your comments, sir.
Okay.
And as I said, if something comes up, we may recall you, but probably not.
That would be fine. Thank you.
Seeing that there's nobody else in the gallery who would like to speak on this matter, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to bring the matter back before us on the board and open it up for discussion. Mr. Evans, is there something you'd like to add?
Yes, we have, staffs received one email from the resident across the street that is in full support of the requested variance.
Thank you. Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, what is the property to the east of that, the back area? What is that?
This is a subdivision park.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah.
It is a park. I, I really can't see a problem with it personally myself, based on the fact that I think it's a real asset, and certainly it's not a detriment to anyone behind, the 3 feet, I think, or the 4 feet, 3 foot 8 variance. So I'd be kind of
So, I'd be kind of, I'd be supportive of this, based on the fact that I think it's going to increase the value of all the adjacent neighbors as well. I don't see any detriment, I don't see anything that would hurt, but that would be my position personally, based on his hardship.
Are there any additional comments from the board on this matter, or is there anyone willing to perhaps put forth a motion to approve or deny? Mr. Lambert?
I was waiting for Mr. Courtney, because it looked like he was going to make a motion, but he didn't, so I'll do it instead. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the variance based upon the testimony provided by the applicant that indicates there are some hardships, and also the fact that it backs up to a subdivision park, so there won't be an encroachment upon a neighbor's backyard.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert, and thank you, Mr. Stratt, for seconding that. Mr. Evans, can we have a roll call on the motion to approve?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Keltzounis?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Sir, your motion, excuse me, your application has been approved. Good luck with your new construction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's it for hearing of cases, item number five, communications. I frankly have none. Is there anything that a board member would like to bring forth for communication purposes? Or, Mr. Evans, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One thing before we go into the one business item, I mentioned that so that Mr. Evans and the alternates are ready, I will not be at the next meeting, so we will need an alternate for me at the July board meeting. So, Mr. Evans and probably Mr. Bloomingdale's turn the next time around, assuming no other board members are going to be absent.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate the upfront notice. Item number six, miscellaneous business, we discussed in the past about amending rules of procedure to change the regular meeting start time from 7:30 to 7:00 p.m. And at this point, I do not frankly recall where we left it, except that we were going to discuss it more, and I'm going to ask, Mr. Evans, can you refresh my memory anyway as to where we left it? I think there was some general thought of agreement of the issue, but I know we want to discuss it more.
We discussed this at the May meeting, and there appeared to be strong consensus on the board to change the meeting time, normal meeting time from 7:30 to 7:00. Staff explained to the board that one of the things that would need to be done was just change the rules of procedure to reflect that change. If I recall correctly, was someone missing from the last meeting? We wanted to give them an opportunity to be here?
Mr. Bartnik was missing, that might have been the reason why we held up.
Yeah, I think that was another reason too. So, here we are with the formal change indicated in the draft, and everybody is now having an opportunity to see it and voice their comments.
Okay. Well, Mr. Bartnik, not to put you on the spot, but if, I was curious if you could, if you have any opinion either way, if you'd like to make it, we'd like to make sure that that, of course, gets in the record, so.
Thank you. I am opposed to the change. I think 7:30 is a good starting time. You take into account the time of the citizens, either in getting to and from their daily events, getting to and from dinner. Right now, it's clear and dry and hot out there, and it's warm out there, but for six, seven, or eight months out of the year, we are always subject to inclement weather. I also note that there is actually an increase in traffic in the past year, possibly due to an increase in economic activity in southeast Michigan, which would also be in favor to me, starting at 7:30 instead of 7:00. I think it's more convenient for the citizens to start at 7:30, so I'm opposed to it.
Thank you, Mr. Bartnik. I would like to add, and I put this out for maybe discussion purposes only, for discussion purposes only, is it, and I want to be corrected if I'm wrong, but it seems to me that if you were to compare us to the planning commission, or the council itself, we do have a large number of applicants that could be best, from an example perspective, maybe described as item 4B, the Plasces who came. And as Mr. Bartnik was saying, I'm assuming they're leaving work, they're going home, many of them have children, et cetera. 30 minutes is not much time, but it seems to me that it could make all the difference in the world. I'm of the opinion that maybe it's not a good idea, because we as a zoning, as a zoning board, tend to deal with subject matters and have applicants that fall more into citizens who are owner of a house in the neighborhood, per se, and that that extra time really benefits them. I'm making the assumption that business that comes before council or planning commission often involves other professionals who are maybe working with developers or other real estate holding entities. I may be wrong in that, but that's just my general thoughts. I just wanted to put that out there for discussion on this matter. Mr. Courtney?
Yes, I'd like to know, Mr. Bartnik, do you have a potential problem yourself, getting from your position at work, to hear? Can you visualize a problem in that way?
No, it's not a personal problem at all. I can be here at 7:00 or at 7:30. It's my concern, though, is for the citizens.
Yeah, see, I'm not too concerned that a half hour makes that much difference for the citizens, but it could for any one of the members, and if it did for the members, I would be opposed to it. As it is, I don't care if we meet at 10:00 in the morning, because I'm available, so whatever the rest of you feel like.
Are there any additional input from council, excuse me, board members, or from staff on this matter? Is anyone willing to make a motion to adjust procedure?
I have one question. What is the reason that we're changing it to 7:00?
Well, as my understanding is, I think, isn't it true, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think some of the other meetings, they all, they're pretty much standardized starting at 7:00.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Courtney?
Yeah, the, if I understand it right, the real reason for changing is that those people that service us have to go home, eat, come back, or else just stay at work until they get done with us.
You referring to city staff, or like taping of the meetings and such, Mr. Courtney?
The taping of the meetings, the legal staff, the administrative staff, yes.
Well, Mr. Evans, let me ask you a question here. One thing is, do we save any money by having the meeting sooner? Do you know? Can you speak to that? Maybe you can, I don't know.
Our department doesn't save money with me.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I know, I don't know either. I just was curious. I'm going to make a motion to keep the time at 7:30, in part to make this open for discussion. I think overall, it seems to work, and I guess I don't want to move anything that's working, or change anything for the sake of change. So, my motion is to keep it at 7:30 p.m. If there's anybody who would like to second that, we can at least bring it forward to vote it up or down.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a second to that motion?
Procedurally, I don't know that we need to have a motion to keep the rules as is.
Do we?
I think it's more a question of if there's no motion, you just move on to the next item in the agenda.
I think you could be right there, definitely. You are right there, I appreciate that, sir. With that being true, at this point, I'd close out the issue and leave it as is, unless somebody here wants to revisit it more, but it seems that, I can't count heads, I'm not sure what everybody thinks. I know two of us have concerns, others seem to be ambivalent either way, but at this point, we, I guess I'm inclined, if we don't have a strong feeling either way, or in a majority, we're going to leave it as is. Okay, for the time being, we're going to leave it at 7:30. Of course, this is always open for revisiting in the future, should one of you want to suggest a change. But next month, or in the months after, at least for the next few, we'll keep it at 7:30 p.m. All right, and there's nobody here, I'd like to note, for public comment, so item number seven is done, and item number eight is adjournment, unless there is anything that you would like to bring forth as part of a comment from any board member. Mr. Evans, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Motz, do you have anything? No? Okay, I'd like to close this June meeting. Thank you for coming.